Being 6:30, I will call the board of selected meeting to order. Mr. Owens, do we have a reason for our non-public tonight?
Just a brief update on a matter of litigation.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, April 5th.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few changes. On page four, the motion, it should say that, and I'm going to go down to the fourth sentence, it'll be the first word of the fifth sentence, instead of permit, it should say an updated insurance certificate and a state liquor license. Wasn't a permit we were looking for. Okay. And then, on page eight, one, two, three, fourth paragraph, and I'm speaking, and Tom Maruckwa is a member of, and the new name of the Lake Wentworth Association is the Wentworth Watershed Association. Wentworth Watershed Association. And then my last one is on page 11, under Old Business, third paragraph, second sentence, it says the town of Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, after should be consultation with the town planner and public works director to write a letter, and then I'd like to cross out everything else in that sentence and have it written this way because he saw similarities in writing between Kathy Barnard's letter and the board's letter. And that's all I have. I'll make a motion to accept the April 5th minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearings, temporary outdoor event permits. The first one is the American Legion Post 18 to hold the Memorial Day Parade on May 29, 2017, starting at Brewster and ending at Dockside from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. I don't see Mr. Chamberlain here.
Yeah, I don't see Harold here. I don't know what the board's pleasure is, if you'd like to proceed.
Yeah.
Without him?
Proceed.
I have one question. I didn't see an insurance certificate. Is this under the town's insurance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no problem moving forward with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Harriman Hale, American Legion Post Number 18, to hold Memorial Day Parade on May 29, 2017, starting at Brewster and ending at Dockside from 9:00 a.m. to noon.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Second, public hearing is American Legion Post 18 to hold the Independence Day Parade on July 4, 2017, starting at Larry, Bassett, and Forest Roads, and Old Lakeview Terrace to Brewster Academy from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., parade to start at 10:00 a.m. And once again, Mr. Chamberlain's not here, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk about the parade? If not, I close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Harriman Hale, American Legion Post 18, hold Independence Day Parade on July 4, 2017, starting at Larry, Bassett, and Forest Roads, Old Lakeview Terrace to Brewster Academy from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Acceptance of grants and donations over $10,000. This is for the acceptance of a donation of $12,823.50 from the Friends of Abenaki for the Abenaki Storage Shed. Jerome?
Yes, that's the first one. These are being put forward basically as formalities. These amounts have actually been expended already, but as you know, under New Hampshire law, we're supposed to have a public hearing to accept any grants or donations over $10,000. And this way, when the auditors do the, they check on this, they'll see that we did have the required public hearing. So, as you know, the Friends of Abenaki contributed an amount of $12,823.50 for the construction of the Abenaki Storage Shed next to the Abenaki Lodge, and that project was completed last fall.
Excellent. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that want to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll move to accept donations totaling $12,823.50 from Friends of Abenaki, Inc. for the Abenaki Storage Shed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Second is an acceptance of a grant, project number 33-00696, the amount of $150,000, $150,000 from the Department of the Interior's Land and Water Conservation Program, the Abenaki Ski Lodge, Four Season Lodge. Mr. Owen?
Yes, of course, this project was completed the fall before last, but we just actually received the check from the federal government about three months ago. And I guess it should be noted that this is probably one of the last grants that is going to be made from the Land and Water Conservation Program because the Congress did not reauthorize the program. So this was the last, the last funding round that they, they had, I believe, with that program, and we were fortunate to receive $150,000. That was part of the total project budget for the Abenaki Lodge.
I'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that want to say anything about this? I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, I'll just make one comment. I think that shows how our staff goes out after grants, and that's a significant amount of money that cutbacks the taxpayers' obligation for that Four Season Lodge, and I think it was under Ethan Hippel, and I want to thank them for doing that.
I think it shows that, you know, what Linda said, you know, it's, we have excellent staff here that, you know, contributed a lot towards the cost of that lodge, and seeing it come back in is good for the taxpayers here in Wolfboro. I'll adjournate a motion to accept the grant.
I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $150,000 from the U.S. Department of Materials, Land and Water Conservation Fund Project 33-00696 for the Abenaki Ski Area Four Season Lodge.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have the bulk vote, which includes weekly manifest, property tax exemptions, denials, applications for current use, notices of intent to cut wood, yield tax levy warrants, and raffle permits.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remove two items under B, Property Tax Credits and Exemption Approvals, number two and three, one for 111 Bracket Road and one for 109 Bracket Road, because I need to step down for those two.
Okay.
And that's my motion to remove those.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of removing those two, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Remove those two.
And I'll make a motion to accept the bulk vote minus those two items.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve on the bulk vote under B, two and three, those two items on Bracket Road for 111, 109 Bracket Road, to approve those.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
Next, we have appointments to, in our ongoing effort to fill the various committees here in town, we have appointments to, a couple of the committees to fill today. The first is the Conservation Commission. Brian Gifford, I see, has reached out to the Conservation Commission and met with, I thought that was called.
That's very cool.
Met with them. I don't see Brian here today.
I don't see him here this evening.
But he did meet with Dan Coons, and so... He's a newer resident to town. I have met Brian. He lives on Crescent Lake, a year-round resident now, so... Is everyone comfortable having him not here, but making the nomination?
I think if Dan's met with him, that's fine, and you know him.
I would move that we appoint Brian Gifford to the Conservation Commission.
As a full-time member?
As a full-time member.
And I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll also make a motion to appoint the Senate to be reappointed as an alternate member of the commission, if you'll accept.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll second that, and on these, both of these motions, we probably should put down that their term expires April 15, 2020.
Yep.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
The EDC, Economic Development Committee, there remain vacancies for alternate members. Peter Cook has verbally expressed an interest in serving. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Owens, and Jim O'Donnell have expressed, I don't see...
I don't see either one here. Mr. O'Donnell did attend the EDC meeting yesterday morning and did reiterate his interest in being appointed to the EDC as an alternate.
I, I think that would be good. He did come. He was interested enough. I think he has some economic development background, has run some businesses in technology and stuff, and I think he would be a great asset to the Economic Development Committee as an alternate. And Peter Cook, doing the Pickering House, is somebody who will have a real vested interest in seeing the economic growth in our community, so I would feel comfortable nominating both of them as alternates to the EDC. Mr. Owen, is there a term limit on that?
I think we make the alternates for three years.
Three years?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those two are appointed. We're still looking for people for the Oil-Foil Control Committee.
Actually, that, that was an error. That committee's got a full slate now.
Excellent.
With the two people that were appointed last, at your last meeting. The two new people that, that came forward.
Excellent. I don't see Bree here, but Bree has expressed an interest in serving on the Energy Committee.
Well, I'd like to kind of speak up here. I only have one person on the Fisherville Committee. She said she'd work on either one, so I'm going to see if I can nab her. So, I mean, you know, I don't care, but I just...
Okay.
Fisherville is, is in need, very much in need of people to get involved.
Okay, so you're going to reach out to her on that, on Fisherville, and see if we can...
Yeah, she said that she would be happy to step in and fill one of the, on the role on one of the two boards, so I guess it's really our choice of where we put her.
You can always grab her.
I'd like to grab her. We, how is the, are there a lot of people on the Energy Committee?
No.
I think they have one or two vacancies remaining at this point.
They have...
How many? I think there's seven.
That being the case...
I knew I brought this along for some reason here.
Well, it's an opportunity for, we're on TV tonight, where it's an opportunity for any resident that wants to be more involved in the town, and there are a lot of people that take a lot of their time to, you know, to be involved and to be part of these committees, and they've done excellent work over the years, so if you are interested or have been involved in the past and would like to come back, you know, we have vacancies for, for various committees, and it would be nice to see these get filled up and, so that we can have new, exciting things happen in Wolfboro.
We have, there are seven people on the Energy Committee, and I believe you filled two of the three vacancies last week, so we have this one remaining vacancy that we indicated an interest in.
Fisherville.
Fisherville.
I'd like to put her on Fisherville. I could use a lot of help there, and of course, in our town, Carl Shannon told all about our Fisherville, so we better come up with something.
So, we had, and just, so the public knows that there are four remaining open positions on the Fisherville Committee that remain vacant right now, so that's, you know, that we've, we have a lot of interest in Fisherville over the last two years, and, you know, a lot of different businesses in town have gone out and built bobhouses that represent their businesses that will eventually go out on the ice there once we get a good, solid freeze winter, and it's just one more thing that we do, can do to attract business here to, and tourists here to town in the off-season, so...
She said, and here she...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is if we don't have a winter that we can get it out onto the ice, we're going to need to find another place in town, maybe in Foss Field, and get them up, and I think we need that to take place.
We do. If they are Brewster Beach or someplace.
Yep, yep, Brewster Beach is just another possibility, too.
So do you want to make that motion to appoint her to the Fisherville Committee?
I will make the motion to appoint Bree Shutey to the Fisherville Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none from the board, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And just for public's information, there remain two vacancies on the Pathways Committee for full members. So if you're interested, please reach out to the, to Mr. Owens, and we'll get you on one of those. Next, we have new business.
We do have Danny Meskowitz for the Fisherville, Don Meskowitz, that's the one, would be my one committee member, so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Don Meskowitz to the Fisherville Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none from the board, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Just have one quick question. Is there a policy or about how many board members could be on one of these committees? Is there only one selectman on the Fisherville Committee at this time?
Yes, and if you'd like to join.
I would, I would...
Fantastic.
...ring on that. I didn't want to, there was already two there, I obviously didn't want to quorum there, but...
No, I'm the only one, so I'd love your...
Okay.
Come on.
I'll make that a motion.
And I'll second...
Second it quick before he changes his mind.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, abstain. After offering.
Under new business, we have monthly budget expenditures. Pete?
Good evening. Pete Chamberlain, Director of Finance. Hopefully you had a chance to read my report. At this time of the year, we should be approximately 25% expended a day, as you'll see. General fund is approximately 23.2% expended, water 28.3%, electric fund 22.6%, sewer fund 43.7%, pop whaling 32.1%, with an overall of approximately 25%. One thing I would like to mention with regard to the electric fund is that there is a certain adjustment in there that has to do with accounts payable from prior year. Any of the invoices for electricity that we purchase for resale is if it's got a date of prior to the December 31st of the other year, they book it against, so hence the 22%. That'll get caught up at the other end of the year, though. And as usual, debt service payments in the water and sewer fund are, are, you know, paid up earlier in the year, so you, they're a little heavier on that. General fund's doing pretty well, I think. Same way with the revenue report. General fund revenue is running about 25%, so it looks to be kind of... Been chugging along, no, not too many flips.
Any questions for Pete?
No, I, I'd sent my questions, and he did a nice job of answering them for me, so I'm fine.
Are you speaking to the installation of the air conditioner in the server room?
Last, during the budget process, we appropriated $7,000 to install the air conditioning down in the electric server room downstairs, and I got, I got three prices. The main thing I wanted to talk to the board about was the fact that in one of those proposals, it involved putting a box kind of condenser up on the side of the building, and the other lower price that we received involved putting another louver, the same, pretty much the same, the louver down toward the corner of the building. I just wanted to make sure that, obviously, I think we should go for the, at least not none, but seeing it was going to make, potentially make a change on the aesthetics of the building on that side.
Mm-hmm.
I thought I'd, we talked with Dave, and we thought it'd be a good thing to talk to you folks first before, prior to doing that.
So, just for clarity for me, the $6,307 option does not have the box on the outside of the building?
No, it has the louver.
The louvers.
Louvers, so it's, would fit in with what's there?
Yeah, yeah, I told him when I spoke with him, I said, "I want to make darn sure that the louvers were as close to possible as the one that's existing there, and the same color."
I'm fine with that.
The only thing I noticed, and I didn't notice it in, in the HVAC service one, I was in reference to electrical. Are they, are they doing it, or?
No, I have to get an electrician to...
Okay, I noticed one had it included, and the other, evidently these two didn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
One included it, and actually, I don't think two of them did include it. Highest one and the lowest one didn't include it, but that should, should be able to do that, you know, within budget anyways.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure before we go poking any holes into the exterior of the building that the board was aware of it and didn't have any issue with it.
We just filled those up, didn't we?
Yeah, I know.
Well, the diagram that shows here shows it'll be similar to the one that's already existing?
Yes.
We'll try to make it as similar as possible.
Okay.
It's not on the front of the building, which would be more problematic.
We tried getting it in the back, but it's such a longer distance, it increases the cost of the project. It's no, there's really no good, easy way to do that going out back of buildings.
Isn't that the back of the building there? Side?
Side.
Yeah. He may think that's a furniture.
Jason Cobb from the, Jason Cobb from the school.
Is the other one serviced by Joy's, too? Is the other unit already being serviced by Joy's HVAC or a different contractor?
Yeah, they'll service it.
They service the other one already, the other...
We have control technology.
Okay.
That does the rest of it.
Okay.
But we have used Joy for the public safety building.
Okay.
And they've been very responsive when we've needed them.
Okay.
Do you need a motion on this, or just a consensus?
Well, we just wanted to get your, your tacit approval, as it were, before we go ahead with it.
Good.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a commercial vessel landing permit, Winnipeg Flagship Corporation.
Evening.
Evening.
Thank you.
Wouldn't know it.
Captain Jim Morash from the Mount Washington, and I'm happy to say ice is out as of Monday, and compared to what we were dealing with last fall, it is nice to see the lake back up there, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Speaking with the governor yesterday at the Governor's Conference on Tourism, and in spite of the, the extra water we see there this spring, it really is only just a little bit above a full lake. I checked today, before I came here, it was at 504.50, with the full lake being 504.34. So this time of year, we'd like to see at least a foot up above, because they are letting out the water considerably this time of year, so let us pray for some, a little bit more rain to get the level up a little bit more, and hopefully they'll manage it better than they did last year. That's my conversation with the governor yesterday, but apparently they have been talking about it. I guess D, yes, who are Department of Environmental Services, had their issues last fall, as we did. That's why unfortunately we had to stop coming into Wolfboro a week, with a week left in our season. That's the bad news. The good news is in my 38 years with the company, I've only seen it that low one other time, and that was like in 2001, so hopefully it's a rare occurrence. But I do come for you tonight again on my yearly visit to ask for, to approve the commercial landing permit for us to come into Wolfboro, hopefully, because our first cruise out of Wolfboro is the prom, which is coming up on, on the May 13th, everyone.
And you're coming in the same number of days as last year?
We are. We haven't shrunk the schedule at all.
I thought so.
Continue as is as we, as we go forward.
The only thing I saw was that 10, 1, 2017, the insurance will run out, and you'll just give us a new one?
Yeah, that happens every year, Linda. We, that's our annual renewal of the insurance, and I, I don't expect any problems in renewing our insurance.
Yeah, we just always note that to whoever comes in, that that needs to be done, so I was sure you will.
And I know the town's been very good at reminding me as well when that date comes up, so it's excellent.
Board, any other?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve and sign a commercial vessel landing permit for the MS Mount Washington for the 2017 season.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Will you be having a shakedown trip this year?
No, actually, we won't, but stay tuned for next year, because the governor did express interest yesterday with me.
Okay.
Right now, it's a little late for me to put it together for him. I was hoping it would be one this year. But we have been, again, set back with the, with the cool temperatures and such, so we're still a little bit behind in getting our vessel ready, so I need that extra week. Our first public cruiser, first charter, I should say, is May 6, and I'm going to need every day I can to get our ship shape, so. But next year, if I plan early enough, we can get the... But next year, if I plan early enough, we can get the things done, and I hope to, hope to bring it back maybe next year.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next, we have Key Waden Road residents, and this is to talk about road conditions on Key Waden Road. If there are one from the audience that'd like to speak, Mary?
Hi. I'm Dave Aubrey. Give me a call anytime, sure. Reach it.
Love to have her.
Okay.
Yep.
Gonna do the story for you.
One sec. Okay. Good evening. I want to thank the town manager and the board for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Coffey-Moorean, and I'm property at 74 Main Delve Road. I've been a taxpayer since 1981. I'm here tonight to stress my concern for the condition of the roads in Wolfboro.
Can you speak a little bit closer to the?
Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah?
I think so.
Yeah. Got it? Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay. Okay. Do you need me to start over, or? No, okay. I'm here tonight to express my concern for the condition of the roads in Wolfboro, and to propose a list of recommendations for the town manager and the board to consider to bring the roads up to a reasonable condition. The background. I came up in February just to visit my property, and I obviously had to go down Key Waden Road, and it was in deplorable shape. It reminded me to call the DPW to ask if Key Waden Road was on the list for reclamation in 2017. I'd called the last three years and told each year that it was being considered for the subsequent year. Mr. Ford of the DPW called back and said that Key Waden would be considered for 2018. It wasn't a certain thing, but it was going to be considered for 2018. So this would be four years that Key Waden was in this condition. I asked Mr. Ford for some general information regarding Key Waden Road as it compares to all roads maintained by the DPW. Total miles of road covered by the DPW equals 65 miles approximately. Key Waden is a half a mile, which means it's less than 1 percent of all roads maintained by the DPW. According to Mr. Ford, there was no record of the last time Key Waden was paved, and he could go back 10 years. So in a way, I decided that calling and stating that Key Waden needed to be rehabbed was ineffective. So I did a little more research, and Key Waden might be a short road, but it's frequently traveled. There are approximately 90 taxable properties either located on Key Waden Road or that use Key Waden Road to get to their property. Total assessed value is $58 million of our $1.9 billion, which is equal 3 percent. Tax revenue is $825,000, or 3 percent of Wolfboro's taxable revenue. I decided I'd write to every property owner affected by the poor condition of the Key Wa, of Key Waden, and give them the information that I just noted, and ask them if they desire to contact you. I have no idea whether or not any of them did, or some of them did, or all of them did. I really don't know. I just decided that's how I was gonna do it. Then I made an appointment to appear, to appear in front of you, obviously, April 19th. Mr. Owen, Wolfboro's town manager, emailed me to let me know I had a right to be heard by the board. Mr. Owen noted to me that the roads to be rehabbed in the spring and summer of 2017 were approved by the voters' approval of Article 12 in the town elections in March. He let me know that the roads had been listed two weeks in the Granite State. He did not mention that the posting of the articles also stated, and I quote, "exercise your right to vote." I'm certain that Mr. Owen did not intend to insult me. The majority of the property owners that use Key Waden Road can vote. By using a very general calculation, I estimated that 50 percent, 50 percent, and I'm, I'm sure you probably already know this, 50 percent of all Wolfboro tax revenues come from property owners that cannot vote in town elections. Clearly, Wolfboro enjoys taxation without representation. I came to realize, though, that the disrepair of Key Waden Road is not an exception, but in line with the condition of many roads in Wolfboro. I know that every year, Wolfboro voters approve a substantial amount of money for the roads. $750,000 this past year is what they approved. But I started to question why the DPW does not seem to make progress. I got drawn in to learn more about best practices of road maintenance. I met with, so what I did was, I said, "Okay, I live in a town, I'm a resident of a town in Massachusetts, that the roads are in good shape." And it's a town. It's not a city. It's bigger than Wolfboro, but not bigger during the summer as far as residents. So what I did was, I said, "I have a right to meet with him." So I went to the town of Westwood and met with the director of Public Works, Todd Corshen. Westwood has 14,000 residents with 92 miles of well-maintained roads with an annual CIP budget of $540,000. That is $210,000 less than we spend here. I learned that Westwood does, did not always have roads that were in good condition. Several years ago, Westwood, Westwood voters approved a road improvement bond and brought its roads into acceptable condition. Since that time, Westwood has had an outside engineering firm, the Beta Group, to evaluate the roads every three years for a cost of $20,000, half of which is paid from a grant from the MIA Insurance Company. Roads are rated, starting from 100 best, that have just been paved or reclaimed, to zero. He showed me the report from two years ago. A majority of the roads are rated 70 or above, which was the plan after the bond upgrade. Roads rated lower than 70 may be in disrepair because of an unexpected event or because of coordination of roads and utilities, which could delay the work on a road. The director is responsible for keeping the roads rated at 70. Deferred maintenance of microsealing and mill and overlay keeps the roads from extensive deterioration. Roads have received overlay or watched and patched. Reclamation, that means total taking the road down, digging it out, new drainage, everything, which is what sooner or later Key Waden's gonna have, or needs to have, is infrequent as it is costly, resource-intensive, and deemed unacceptable. Given this information that is somewhat comparable in size and budget to here, I met with Mr. Ford to find out in more detail about the upkeep of Wolfboro roads. Mr. Ford and I met for an hour and a half. Mr. Ford was candid, resourceful, and very helpful. These are the things I learned about Wolfboro and its roads. Mr. Ford has been the director, the DPW director, for 10 years. Mr. Ford is responsible for water and sewer, solid waste, highway, buildings and grounds, capital projects, and garage. And I probably left something out. Clearly, Mr. Ford is a man who wears many hats, and from day to day, must juggle his priorities. Wolfboro's website states that the DPW's mission is to maintain and upgrade the town's infrastructure, including, but not limited to, the roadways. Mr. Ford inherited an inventory of roads that was in disrepair, and I quote, "He has been in the crisis mode for 10 years when it comes to maintaining the roads of Wolfboro." He and his department have internally classified the condition of every road in Wolfboro using the 100 to zero rating, as does the report used by Westwood. And maybe you've been given a copy of this. I made copies for you if you want one. This is his report, and on the last page, he gave me all the information of money that has been given to... Okay, so you all have that? Okay, great. So I hope you all looked at it. The last times that he was able to do this, or had the time to do this, was 2013. Some roads have been reclaimed and are not as low as noted in 2013, but many roads, such as Key Waden, that was a 51 in 2013, are much lower today. Key Waden has not secured a place on the list for 2018. Mr. Ford is not required to formally deliver to the board or the town manager his internally-prepared road condition report. And when presenting the roads for capital improvement lists for the town article, he recommends for the list, his recommendations for the list are approved without discussion of the roads of similar disrepair that are not being proposed. At least, that was my interpretation of our meeting. If I'm wrong on that, he can correct me. And lastly, Mr., I asked him a question. Mr. Ford estimated that it would take between $2 and $4 million to be spent in two years to bring the roads of Wolfboro into a manageable repair status. So what was I gonna do with this information? I just went ahead and acted like you had hired me as a consultant, and I came up with a plan. So I said, "Okay, what I would say is, Wolfboro needs to commit to bring the town roads up to a satisfactory level of 70 by the year 2020." And how would you do this? Given all the responsibilities and items on the plate of the DPW director, I would have an outside engineering company such as the Beta Group conduct a survey in 2017 of Wolfboro's roads with the input of Mr. Ford, and present the results to the town manager and the selectmen. Next, take the 2017 report produced by the Beta Group or some outside, and direct the DPW director to develop a 10-year plan for the roadways of Wolfboro that not only schedules out the eventual upgrade of the Wolfboro Road, but prices out the cost of implementing such a plan. That would be due in 2018. The next thing would be to convene the town manager, the board, and the DPW director to critique, to critique the 10-year plan. They would modify and accept the plan, and begin to meet with town committees to gain input and eventual acceptance. Lastly, if a bond issuance needs to be considered, the, or would be the avenue to pay for the improvements proposed, proposed, oh, I'm sorry. If the bond issuance is considered, the avenue to pay for the improvements would be proposed to the voters in 2019. Included in the presentation to the voters is an explanation of the annual CIP that is now proposed, and how it would most likely drop. That drop could be used for debt service on the bond. So it's shifting the money from how it's being spent currently to where you get a lump sum, and then you get to... Oh, are you okay?
Excuse me. I took a drink of water and went down the wrong pipe. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. My conclusion. Taxpayers should be able to expect that their payments provide the basics: security, education, water, sewer, and the roadways. Our roads are what every citizen and taxpayer use day in and day out. No doubt, Wolfboro has limited human and capital resources, but I am positive that with a well-thought-out road enhancement plan, we can better use our resources to achieve success with regard to upgrading the conditions of our roads. I thank you for your time. I've been coming to Wolfboro since 1960. I've owned property since 1989, and I love the town.
Can I ask you a question?
Thank you, sure.
You should probably start the wheels in motion to put Key Waden Road on the budget that we're gonna be considering like in a half a year from now. It's coming up fast. They start doing that like September, just for your own road.
You see, I don't, I don't know what I have a right to and what I don't have a right to, because all I am...
That's spelled out. You can, you know, talk to David, and David does a list of what he thinks are the most urgent things based on, on inhabitants. Now, Key Waden Road, which I'm very familiar with, has lots of inhabitants. You might have a road someplace else that doesn't have any, one house a mile, and that would be lower priority. But I would think that most people would agree that Key Waden, if David inspected it and found it needed it, which obviously probably does, would be a very great candidate for the list. Is that right, David?
It surely is. Again, everything she said tonight, been right on. It's been on the list four years and will be on the list this year unless something like North Wolfboro Road, which is in worse shape, jumps higher on us. Or we have a project, a problem with another project, or we have a yield to the issue. But right now, I can say it's gonna be one of the top ones on the list for 2018.
But in doing all of my research, it's, it's the idea that I'm standing here. Honestly, as a taxpayer, I think that my road should be in somewhat of a decent condition, that I shouldn't have to come and say. And, and looking at his lists here, once a road gets rehabbed, as Sewer Road did four or five years ago, after four or five years, it's starting to deteriorate again. And, and yet, we're not up to where everybody's at a 70. So there's this constant, just not being able to do. It wouldn't surprise me if Key Waden doesn't get done for three or four more years because some other road has to get done.
Well, but I think you've been ver, that's a very good report. I was almost suggesting that you join one of the other open committees because you have a good thinking mind.
I'm on a lot of boards.
That's a compliment, but...
Thank you.
But I would just say, write it up and put it on David's list, and I think, probably speaking for others, we would agree that this would be a high priority thing for the next, the voters to vote on next year. I mean, it sounds to me like it is, and I personally could unlook at it, you know, once you do that, or even before you do it.
But I don't wanna put a Band-Aid on something that needs stitches.
Sorry?
I'd rather not put a Band-Aid on something that needs stitches.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, I think the roads...
If you don't put it on schedule, it's not gonna be done.
No, I know. But I think the roads, in essence, overall, there's a...
Well, the taxpayers, as you probably know, and I'm one and you're one, you know, this year, we had an even budget, no big capital projects, but, you know, I, I as a selectman would be in favor of, and I've said this before publicly, saying, "Okay, let's spend $50,000 for restroom in North Main Street." But the loyal taxpayers, people with fixed income, say, "I don't wanna do it." So it, the idea, what's ideal and what's practical for the community isn't always in sync. But in your road improvement, it's very, very routinized. I mean, I've been in this for years, so I think if you demonstrate to David, which you probably have done, that the road needs fixing, and put it high on the list, it would get done, you know? I'll vote for it.
Linda?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you for coming and taking the time and presenting that to us. And I find it very interesting in terms of possibility of a bond, but you have to realize that we don't have just roads. We have water, we have sewer, we have facilities. And the town went through a period of time where we had taxpayers' association before I came onto the board, and nothing got done. And David Ford is right, we're playing... And Dave Ford is right, we're playing catch-up, and we've come a long way, and the roads is just one of a bunch of facilities that we've had to do some work on. I'm on the CIP committee. Dave comes every year with a figure that is, I think, like, this should be raised to a billion dollars, and has a long list, but we have to juggle a whole bunch of other things so that we balance out, do it to every part of the town. I think you've provided us something that we can definitely talk about and think about in terms of putting a bond to formally, and that would be very difficult, in my mind, to get through in the town, but it may be worth us to try. So thank you for coming and talking to us. As a taxpayer, you have every right to come and speak to us at any time. Just because you can't vote doesn't mean we don't have a vested interest in this community.
Must have some experience in this, by the way. That's a very wonderful report, you know, it's so well-done, you could publish it. Also, comparing to Westwood, Massachusetts, we have hills like Trask Mountain Road, we have swamps and things that maybe require more special care than, say, a level... More or less level Massachusetts town would be per mile.
Dave, is there anything else that you have to add?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Dave?
I just wanted to also thank Mary, she did a great job, and we did spend some time. But I think her point, and that is kind of my... What I'm thinking, because we have been in the crisis, the system she's talking about is the pavement condition index, which is the system we have been using. It was scheduled to get that done last year, which would have given us 3, 10, 2013, and we would have shown there is progress making. So the one thing while is, if you live on a road that hasn't been touched, it is frustrating, but if you're on a Clock Road or Forest Road or Pleasant Valley Road, Linda knows for many years, they spent a lot more money on car repairs, but now that we get to it, we usually do a good job. And we have been trying to do more rebuilding so that the roads will not... Will last longer, which is what you're suggesting. In some of the workshop we had just two weeks ago, we did get some criticism on just shim overlaying, which is the cheap way. And that's what the state's doing, you know, they shim overlay to give you a good riding surface for four or five years, the road falls apart. So we are trying to do that, we are trying to work with the budgets. But I think what she did is made a very good recommendation, which I will... I'd like to take that up, which is the idea of looking at, trying to get away from the crisis and try to get to a long-term plan, which is actually kind of part of our asset management planning. And I need to do a better job. So we are going to do the... In 17, we will do another survey and get the condition. So I think we'll show that we are making progress, but unfortunately, we may not be making progress fast enough, so we are going backwards. So I will follow up on her recommendation so that hopefully by the end of this year, when we get to the CIB committee, we could lay out something, because I think that's a good idea. And I was hoping to do it all in one year, which is unrealistic, which is part of our problems, because I always come up with these ideas and it's hard to deliver them all. But I think the idea of a two or three-year sell would make some sense, and I think we could show that that might be the best long-term solution. So again, thank you so much for that, and I think it would be very helpful, and glad everyone listened. So we will continue working on it. Unless anyone has any questions?
Dave?
I just wanted Mary to know, we had 14 letters that came in.
Yep.
Good turnout.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to comment a little bit. I think Ms. Moran made a very, very good presentation. I supplied her with some information and tried to convey to her that we do have a capital improvement planning process that starts in the late spring or early summer every year, and we spend months discussing which projects to go forward. And in the time that Dave Ford and I have been here, the road upgrade warrant article has gone from $400,000 a year to this year, it was $750,000. So it's almost doubled over the course of 10 years. And we've gone from a road replacement schedule that when we were funding it at $400,000 a year, I think we calculated one time that was about a 23-year road replacement schedule. And at our present rate of funding, we're down to something more like 16 years or something. Still not where we'd like to be, but, you know, we've made a lot of progress going in the right direction, I believe. And we do have a lot of roads competing for those funds. As you heard a couple of weeks ago, those of you that attended the rural roads workshop, we had calls or demands by the residents there for the improvement of North Wolfboro Road and College Road, other roads in the community that are also in poor condition. So it's always a matter of trying to weigh your priorities and how to apply your limited Relative to the idea of a bond issue, that's something, actually, that Dave Ford and I have discussed, the possibility of doing that. The thing, of course, would be how do you schedule a bond issue? And we know that we're going to be facing some other bond issues coming up soon, like the library expansion project. And having more than one major bond issue in any one year would be possibly pretty problematic. And then just on another note, you mentioned Westwood. I used to work for one of your neighboring communities, the town of Needham. And one thing that Massachusetts municipalities get that New Hampshire communities don't get is a lot of state aid. And in Massachusetts, they call it Chapter 90 funds. And every year, every city and town gets a nice, big appropriation, allocation of the state appropriation of Chapter 90 funds that are distributed to the cities and towns for roadwork improvements. And that's something we don't get here in New Hampshire, because we don't have any broad-based taxes like they have there.
You're actually right. Westwood has $540,000, that's only money allowed to use on our roads.
Right.
So the $750,000 and the $540,000 are compounding. So we spent $210,000 more here than we did in Westwood, and we have 30 miles more. That whole town don't bring any good town, real estate tax from the road. So that's how it's comparing, spending on more roads once they have a bond issue.
Okay, well, the roads there may have also had good road bases to begin with. We're dealing with a lot of roads that didn't have proper road bases put down to begin with, so when you reconstruct, you really have to start from zero or below zero, because you have to go down and reconstruct the road base.
Linda?
Yeah, and it is just that amount that we have annually for road maintenance. I mean, we, a couple of years ago, spent $500,000 to get a million and a half project done on Middleton Road. We're about ready to do Center Street. We've put $800,000 into that project. And these are state roads coming through our town, in which we have a responsibility to do everything outside the white line and drainage. So we have more than just our roads that we're dealing with. Route 28, we spent almost $100,000 to come up with a design for when the stink finally gets here, to help us do that road, and we're going to have to do everything outside the white line. So we have a number of other big projects that we've had to do, and we try to... We are partnering with the state because we do a municipally managed project, and they pay two-thirds of the funds. So it has come out...
Couple months ago.
...for us when we do that. So we try, as with grants, we try to find any penny we can.
Luke?
Just wanted to add one thing also. Dave Ford alluded to it, and Mr. Owen did too, that the process we're going through now on these roads of the reconstruction part is more expensive, because you're going down into the bases and the drainage and all that stuff, so the money doesn't go as far. But once we get through these real bad roads and they are rebuilt and the bases, the bases are all rebuilt, we're up into just... Then we're into basically pavement maintenance. And from that point on, our maintenance, our, you know, annual budget sale will actually stretch over a lot more of the roads at that point, because then we're doing more surface maintenance and not so much in the actual reconstruction. As you pointed out too, we had just so many roads when Dave came on 10 years ago that, you know, we are playing catch-up, but we will get there. So, you know, not everybody can be, you know, done at the same time. I mean, I deal the same thing at the town where I work, you know, and the roads and the budgets that we have to work with up there, so... But I appreciate you bringing it to us. You did a great job presenting it and everything, and, you know, just to look at it. Just to point out that we will be... That money will go a lot further in the future, once these road bases are all rebuilt and you're able to just do pavement maintenance on top of that, so that was it.
Thank you. DPW project updates. Dave?
Yeah. I want to talk about a few projects that are going to be disrupting some of our normal spring activities. First one is the Mass Landing parking lot upgrades. It's a project that, two years ago, we appropriated funds to do design. This year, we appropriated the money for construction. Project was bid out in the winter, so we were ready to go. Integrity Earthworks, which is a local construction company, that won the low bid and has bonded the project. And we are planning on mobilizing on May 1st. And the big news there is we are doing the full parking lot and the area in front of the boat ramp, which will require us to shut the boat ramp down for sections during construction. And so we've got this notice, I think it should be in the package, that will be in the paper this week, and we'll run it for a couple of weeks, as well as we'll be putting a poster up there at the site, kind of telling people ahead of time that the... Basically, the lot will be closed, starting again Friday... Excuse me, Monday, May 1st, and for that full week on Friday, but on the end of the week on Friday, the area will be open. The parking lot will be restricted, because there might be some construction material, that'll be all safety cordoned off, and then there'll be access to the ramp, so if people need to get in, but they can't... And then by Monday morning, though, they have to have their cars out, because we'll need to have the parking lot back to the contractor on Monday morning. So if there's any special cases, they can contact the office, and we can make some provisions, but we're really trying to get this done quickly, and the best way is to give them full access to the lot so they can do the work. And this work does include not just repaving, but similarly, like what we have with our road problems, a lot of our parking lots were built very similarly. They were a little dirt, and then we put a little fill in, before you know it, put a little more fill in, and that was before we had wetlands. That was just... That was a little marshy area, so... And then before you know it, we put a gravel on it, we paved it. Well, that lot probably was built, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 years ago, and it's a mess, and it's... And also, because of the Wentworth Watershed Association, former Lake Wentworth Association, and their work towards doing stormwater treatment, this is also going to be a demonstration project in which we will have three or four different types of stormwater treatment. So this project is going to be, again, another one that's... It will be a disruption, or I hope by the time we get through the summer, it'll be up and running and looking really nice, and we'll have some demonstra... Some poster boards explaining what was going on there. But again, we just want to make sure everyone's aware of what's going to happen there.
Linda?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. One, I would suggest that you send this to the Wentworth Watershed Foundation, and they can post it on their website...
Yep.
...where a lot of people look. And I also noticed there's construction on a house that's right by the ramp, and I didn't know whether you had notified them.
Oh, no, we've been working closely because of the complications, and they're also been working with us. In fact, they've been a very good partner, the General Contract... I don't know the owners, but the General Contract's been working with us. They had to put in underground electric, so we're going to do away with the overhead electric there. The water sewer had to be coordinated and other aspects, so they're aware, and, you know, that's a good point. We are going to get that to the association, as well as... It's on the webpage now. And just let me read that too, so people know that, starting Monday, May 1st to May 5th, it'll be closed, that's Monday through Friday. The following week, we're going to do Monday through Wednesday, which is 5/8 through 5/10, and then the following week is going to be 5/15 through 5/17. Again, that's subject is... Subject to... The schedule, excuse me, is subject to change, depending on weather and unexpected conditions. Then there'll be a little bit of a period where we'll have it open, and then we're going to come back, because we'll be doing work on the edges, and then we're going to come back and have to close it down between June 12th and June 14th, in which we'll be doing the complete overlay of the parking. So we'll be doing some base paving during the first three weeks, and then we'll be working on the edges, putting in the stormwater treatment. Forest pavement's going to be going in, which is a little tricky, and when we do that, we're going to need to close down again for the three days. But then we'll be open by the end... By the time official summer starts, when school lets out, the hope is the line, the lot will be striped and be ready for operation. And again, the lot actually will be a little bit bigger, we'll have room for, I think, seven, eight trailer parking spaces and just as many cars as we have before, so it'll be a great asset for us. But just be patient and try to park other places if you have to drop your boat, have someone pick you up, and then kind of get out of there.
There's also a town parking lot by the middle of Forest, where some people, when that lot is built, can go down the park.
That's right. Yep. All set on that? Okay. The next project ahead is the... Well, let's talk about the Center Street reconstruction. We're meeting Friday morning for the contract signing. The contractor is GW Brooks out of Freedom, New Hampshire. They were the contractor who won the Middleton Road job, and we're very happy with their work there and their subcontractors. So there's a lot of work here, there's a lot of complications, and they were... We were trying to get the job started early to get some of the work done this spring, but once they mobilize, there's some significant costs and efforts in mobilizing, and they think that if they only mobilize and only be able to do, you know, three or four weeks with the work, then they shut down, because we are requiring to be two lanes of traffic all the way through June, July, and August. They're deciding to do just a few things on the periphery. We have to do some test pits and do some checks on some certain structures before we order them, so that'll be done. But then we won't mobilize, they won't mobilize until mid-August, with the idea of getting ready, so that right after Labor Day is when we'll start seeing the major construction, and at that time, we'll be seeing detours and significant delays. The idea is, let's see if we can help the... Not disrupt this summer, which is going to be a great season for us, because we, you know, it's... This is Wolfboro, it should be great, and but... And there'll be more information coming, so tomorrow, I mean, Friday, if we get the contract signed, we will be more information coming about the delays and detours and that type of stuff when construction starts.
Linda?
Yeah, my understanding was that we also have to move telephone poles in order to move that corner. Is that all going on? After Lake Renee, was that something that could happen this summer?
That's something that will happen this summer. I'm sorry, that's right. The moving of the utility poles is not part of their contract. That's... Municipal Electric is doing that, and they're subcontracting that out. So Barry's told me that once they finish the project, I think on Sewell Road, they'll be moving up here and moving those poles, so hopefully that'll occur through the summer months. But that's not a major disruption to traffic, so you might see that activity as well, some, again, some digging on the edges, but the major work won't really start until, again, end of August when you mobilize, and then big construction, September, October, November. And then this project will go into next year, so next spring, there'll be a lot of going on, and that we'll be trying to wrap up before the busy season next year.
Okay.
The other one was the dockside parking lot project. We are doing very well with the dockside building. That is almost completed now, and we got into a hornet's nest there when we started undoing things, but we really got down to the bare bones of the building and done a great job of rebuilding. The floor is going in now, and we actually ended up having to replace the walk-in coolers, but that's, I think, is, you know, better long-term, so we're in good shape there. So next week, we like to start the sewer project, which is... We need to replace the sewer line from South Main Street, the manhole that's out in the middle of the street, into the parking lot, and then replace the services to the restaurant building, as well as the two services that are in the alley. That one was identified as a major infiltration source going to our treatment plant, and this is part of the sewer project, so it's being funded under that sewer funding. It will require us to shut that inside it, so going into the dockside parking lot will have to be closed, and half the parking lot will have to be closed because of the excavator and equipment. What we plan on doing is to detour the... As you're coming out, we're going to... No one will be allowed to park on the exit, and we'll make that a two-way, in and out, and that will have cones and signing to allow some access to the dockside parking lot. And I would try to remind people that, mostly businesses, if you can park elsewhere and walk that week, that would be appreciative, and then just leave that for the people, maybe who are coming in to take a look at the lake, or if the boaters are just kind of landing. We're going to get a notice out tomorrow to all the businesses and through the chamber that this is occurring. This took a lot of work, and we are subcontracting out, because we have a deep dig in the street, and we are going to do some pipe bursting, so in an alleyway, we're not actually open digging everything, because it is deep, and we're going to do a pipe bursting, and then we'll be setting a new manhole in the parking lot. So our hope is, we start on Monday, and by Friday, we'll be back and open for weekend traffic, and so it's going to be a challenge, and...
Probably want to post on not letting anyone come in with... Move people with boats up to the museum to put their boats in, because trying to get them in one way, and then that'll even be a really bad angle to try to back in.
Yes, that's going to be near impossible to be... Unless you're... Yes, that's going to be near impossible to be, unless, I mean, little boats, but anything with a big trailer would be well advised, either use one of the marinas, or to mass landing, so we'll get that also out, excuse me. Libby?
I have a question, a little off-topic. When I was at, in the EDC, I saw the head of the boat museum, Lisa Lutz, and she was wondering, when we do the boat launching ramp, whether it would be after their big regatta?
Well, that was a good question. We, I told someone it was going to be after Labor Day, just saying, is it, in my crisis management mode, which is more crisis today than it's ever been, I'm just doing spring projects right now, so when I talked about that, that's going out to bid, that'll be out to bid probably next three, four weeks, and we did not look at the calendar, but obviously she mentioned that to me, so, oh yeah, it will not be before, that's September?
I think it's, I'm not.
Third week?
Yeah, in the second or third week.
Right, well, we want the lake to be down anyway, so this will be all set up, and we'll have a water contract by then, but we won't do any digging probably till October, when the lake is as slow as, and then hopefully it can be banged out relatively quickly.
She'll be greatly pleased.
Yes. Well, that's, I do have to check those calendars, we're saying, even in the spring now, I was getting nervous about, there's something going on later on with the Smith River canoe race, and then we have another event, I think, May 6th, so it's trying to get this stuff done, and, you know, our season is getting shorter and shorter, it seems, for construction.
14th through the 16th.
14th through the 16th, David.
In September.
September.
Great. Got one of those fancy calendars, I see.
Yes, he knows.
Old school, David. Okay, so we'll, just like you say, we'll be putting a notice like we have a mass land, we'll put one, those together, that'll be posted, and we'll get through all the different, and we'll also hand it out to all the businesses, so they'll, they can expect to be, you know, be some disruption there, and we'll be talking to them about that. Okay, so those are the easy ones, let's talk about the hard one next. The District 3 resurfacing program, which is, so District 3, New Hampshire DOT is planning to do Route 109, which is from Pickering Corner, or Route 28, through town, which we call South Main Street, North Main Street, all the way out to the Tufton Borough Town Line. Project has been bid out, and is awarded to Continental Paving, and they may be subbing it out to certain people to do the actual work. The restrictions on that work is it can't start until after Labor Day, and it has to be done by October 1st. It can't have daytime paving between Pickering Corner and Sewell Road. And it is just a overlay project, a three-quarter inch skinny mix that's going in, and they're only going to pave 26 feet wide. So 26 feet wide, what you see, and as you get out of town, and you start going up, that's the width, you basically have two 12-foot lanes and a one-foot shoulder. That's what they're budgeted for, and that's all they're going to pay for. So as we come into town, we get to Pickering Corner, and all of a sudden, our road widens out, where we have on-street parking, or even downtown, we have on-street parking, just have wider areas for delivery trucks, or the head-on parking, all that will not be paid for by the state. And, and the last time it was done, in 2010, we did pay to do the difference, to bring it to the curb line. The problem now is that we've lost our curb line. In some areas, if we were to extend that three-quarter inch to the curb line, our curb reveal would be down to two or three inches, which is ineffective and unsafe, people will start driving up on the side of the sidewalks. We talked about potentially trying to grind out, and then matching that grind out, it just, it would not work in terms of how they explained to me, and their process, and how much it would cost. So that's one major, significant problem, and originally, I was going to come here and say that we need to do this, because it'll look sloppy without it. And after talking to the engineers yesterday, I walked the site with them and the contractor, they brought up other issues. We can't just keep adding this shiny, we need to rebuild Main Street, similar to our town roads, this is another road that really was never built to a state standard, and we have issues with pavement now, so the pavement thickness now is probably seven or eight inches going down through the downtown, so our curb reveal, so we have to do something about that. The second issue they're doing, even though this is a maintenance project, the state decided to, all our crosswalks was to install detectable warnings, which are those metal, cast iron bump things for the people with eyesight problems, that they could feel what they came, which would require us to, all the sidewalk, we have 10 crosswalks that cross the state road, and then we have other ones that, if it, like, for instance, if it crosses South Main Street and it crosses Central Ave, they were going to do them, both on Central Ave, so not only where it crossed Main Street, but it would also cross, so it ended up being maybe 20-some of these crosswalks, which means about 40-some of these domes. And all they provided the contractor with is a standard and a schematic showing where they go. And it's not that simple. These are designed, they have to meet ADA standards, and they're very specific standards with very, you know, tight tolerances, and if, without doing a detailed topo survey of the area, and how you tie in all the angles, to give a contractor and to say, hey, do this, is nuts. In addition, if we, they're saying they would rebuild those sections up to a certain limit, so they're limited by the contract how far they can go, where in some cases, they may have to rip up two or three segments of sidewalk, you know, 15, 20 feet. And now, with the fact that we're overlaying, now our crosswalk, if we didn't overlay to the curb, now we have another problem, now we don't, we can't match the pavements, and the pavement may be higher, so it becomes a problem that is potentially counter what we're trying to do. We're trying to make things better for our citizens, it would make things worse, because we might end up with more puddles and icing. So I've contacted the state, and I'm going to go more, but I wanted to speak to the selectmen tonight because of this crosswalk issue. In addition to the crosswalk issue, I don't know, in my memo, I talked about the requirement that they take out parking within 20 feet of a crosswalk, which they want as the oncoming traffic, so if you're traveling, say, south on, South Main Street, and you're coming up to a crosswalk, and there's a parking spot right in front of that, they want that spot taken out, so you have better ice, that makes sense, and we all can agree, that would be safer. However, that's 18 parking spaces, which is a large percentage of our downtown parking, and parking is still kind of a critical shortage. Secondary, they say that we need to have a bright light in front of the crosswalk, to make sure that it meets, so they're trying to tell us the F, the state federal standards apply, and we'll know what these look like, because on Senate Street, we are going to put one in, the crosswalk that's mid-block, that will have all the required federal requirements on that, because it's a totally re-engineered, the whole sidewalk's going to be made to match, so that'll work. What they're planning out here will not work, and I'm going to be talking to them about delaying that until we can do it properly. But I'm not saying we're not going to do it, because we should do it, but we have to do it properly, and it should be not just standards and a schematic, it needs to be, each one needs to be engineered out, so we can figure out how the grades work. So that being said, I turn it over to the selectmen to see what your thoughts are about, A, whether or not we pave this additional work, which would be, still look kind of funny, because we wouldn't be able to get it to the curb, we still have to end it somewhere in the middle of the parking spot, so I'm recommending not doing it, and leaving it to it, what they'll do is, they'll do an 18-inch strip, and they'll grind out three-quarters of an inch, and that overlay will tie into that, so it'll be a key point, so it won't look so bad, and as we're plowing, it won't be, but it'll be a seam that will have at the edge of 26 feet, 13 feet from the center line of the road. And then, would you support me, continue the discussions with DOT about holding off on the detectable warnings until we can have a better engineered solution, so we make sure that it works properly? And then, third, I need your vote on the, the lighting is not so important, but on the parking spaces, if you don't want to give up the parking spaces, I can say, we went to the selectmen, and they said, at this point, we can't, or if you want to discuss it, or if you want to study it further, we have until, you know, September's the project, but I, I know we've had this debate a long time ago, but it's a tough one, because you're trying to balance, and the one thing we can say about our downtown, usually, people go slow enough, so it's not, and while, everyone has been scared by someone popping up behind a parked car, if you're just traveling five or 10 miles an hour, it's not a problem. But it potentially could be at some point, the lighting and the parking, but usually when we have a lot of people parking, traffic is jammed up so slow, so it makes it safer, because it is slower, but with that, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Brad? Yeah?
I got one quick question, start with Dave. The resurfacing funds that they use for this, is this coming just from District 3, or is this federal highway funded, or?
Yeah, that's a good question, Brad. It's what they're paying for 171, and it was one contract that's going out all through the Carroll County, so I think it's the money that comes through District 3, and whether it's federal, I'm not sure, but it might be if it's requiring this.
That's what I was kind of getting at, if that's what's behind the driving force for these, you know, for the, what do you call them, the detectable pads there and stuff at the crosswalks, and all that stuff, so. I was just curious if DOT is requiring that, or just from their part of it, or if it's mandated by federal highway?
I've got the email out to the bureau chief, drawn a blank on his name there, but.
From federal highway?
No, from state. Still dealing with the state people.
Alan, Alan Hanscom?
Alan, yeah, he's the District 1, so I've been talking to them, and we're going to be meeting with them on Friday when we sign the contract, and then Bill Lambert, Bureau of Traffic and Concord, so we're going to find out where, how high up this goes, and who we have to talk to to make sure, I don't mind, you know, we don't have a problem doing it, but it makes no sense if we go ahead and install these, because these guys are being paid by mass production. They want to lay pavement, and all this other stuff is just a problem to them, so they're going to sub it out to someone, and before you know it, I'm going to have these detectable domes in there that I'm going to have to rip out eventually, because they're not going to work. I mean, they're going to cause more problems than they were.
I guess I have a real hard time with those lights. I mean, we've spent all sorts of time in Wolfboro, we're trying to get our electric lines underneath the road to have a certain old-time look, and so I have a very difficult time with any of those crossing lights. In terms of the parking spaces, I really don't think we can afford to lose that many, but the safety issue is very hard to overcome with those parking spaces, and there's some that are key, that I think might make sense to get rid of, and others that we might not. I mean, the one up by the old camelot, you know, you got cars on either side, that's just there, you can't see them, you know, so I would like maybe for us to look at, maybe some of the crosswalks we do, and some of the crosswalks we don't. There are, I think, some that are more problematic than others.
Well, that's actually a good idea, because, again, that's, we have a problem with people not using crosswalks, and it's not because we don't have enough of them, it's just because they're not going to use them, but there are certain ones, if we could eliminate, which are bad, anything that's a mid-block, and that's one you just talked about, could be one that we might be able to do away with, and then that puts the burden on the pedestrian to use the right one, if they're not, then they're, they need to be more cautious if they're jaywalking.
Yeah, we've talked about those parking spaces many, many times, many years, and the general consensus was that, what you said, the traffic is usually slow and that kind of stuff, so it hasn't been an issue as far as accidents or anything. I think the police department got involved in it a few times, it just didn't show that it was that much of a hazard, that the state seems to think it is.
Well, it's a federal requirement, they're just trying to go back to, you know, and that's where we need to sometimes apply local logic, whereas if, certain areas, you know, absolutely, and I was saying, this one on Senate Street is a little different, Senate Street's a different area than here, so we're going to see what that looks like. Brewster Academy is looking at putting in a flashing beacon for a crosswalk where they have a lot of their traffic, they're trying to get their students to use the crosswalks right out by the president's.
Good luck.
Well, they, we have a crosswalk there now, and you know what the flashing beacon is, it's what we'll have down here, it'll be a sign off the side, when you push the button, it'll, it'll.
But you know as well as I do, they'll block their doors up there, and they got to go across, we know where they're going to cross.
I think the one thing about Brewster, which is a little different, they have a president who's not afraid of speaking up, and I don't know if she'll have a microphone out by her office and yelling at the kids, but she seems like she's going to, she wants to be proactive, because she doesn't want to see someone get injured. And again, up there, sometimes the speed's a little higher, as we get down in the village here, the speeds do slow down a little bit, but it's something that we can look at, so we'll further discuss the sidewalks, but as far as the parking goes, we're not planning on giving up any parkings, and the lighting, actually, I don't think they wanted me to do anything with that, because they kind of knew that was a little bit outside. But what do you think about the detectable warnings? Are you supportive of trying to make sure we do it properly versus just meeting the requirement?
I would be.
Because we might end up having to go political on this, if they say no, we might have to, and I would need the support of the board here, if we went to our representatives to say, you know, we've got to do this right, not do it wrong.
I would do it.
Dave?
In your letters, too, you mentioned some of the things in reference to the manhole covers being raised, and catch basins and stuff. Is any of this going to be affected with this outside-the-line business?
Yes.
As well?
Yeah, well, we, again, because we're a white-line community, we have to raise all the structures in a drainage system, we own all the water and sewer structures, so we will be doing that, so all the sewer manholes will have to be raised a three-quarter inch, and we'll do that just a week before they're about to pave, that's a given, the water will have to do, but some of the drainage is on the curb line, and some of them have to be rebuilt, because they're breaking down because of the salt.
I saw that, and you're going to.
So we're going to be doing those, that work will start pretty soon, but on other ones, where it's a dip, but it's not too bad, but another three-quarter inch would require us to raise it, we might be able to hold off, if it's solid underneath, and it's not too bad, and it's outside the new paving, it'll, because from a drainage perspective, it'll still work, the road, the center of the road will be a little higher, but in the curbs and the parking will be a little lower, so water will tend to go where it needs to go, into the curb line, and as long as the drainage, but some of the drainage structures might need to be raised also, so that, again, provides more work for us.
Do you have enough money in the road maintenance budget to do what you need to do if we don't go off to the side? I know you had, what, $20,000 or so?
I had a contingency in the road budget, too, because we, at the last minute, we heard about this going on, so we did put a contingency in there, and right now, I'm issuing the contracts for the work on Port Wedlin and Winter Haven and Oakwood Road, which is the first one we'll be reclaiming and paving, so at this point, I still think I have that contingency, but the, if we do not spend the money on the pavement overlay, then we will have some of that contingency, but I forgot, one other thing I got to talk about, which is almost a more significant problem. So the money is still there, I haven't spent it yet. Water, sewer money will come out of the water sewer budgets to raise those structures. The other item, which was, is as we go past Sewell Road, and we start heading up North Main Street, on either side, we started parking on the shoulder, and, but that is a paved shoulder with a kind of swale, and there's catch basins every 100 to 150 feet. All that drainage is original, goes back to the 1940s, and that shoulder has not been paved, at least the last three times they've done overlays, and they do overlays every seven to eight years, so that's now 20-some-year-old pavement, probably without a great gravel base, and now it's getting really bad, and it's, some areas patching up. We were hopeful that the state would say, hey, that's part of your roadway, you will include that, so we made pitch to have that done, we were told it was going to get done, but when we walked with the contractor, they showed me the contract, it wasn't in the bid items, so they're still going to just go up there, and if, so we, if we want those, to preserve those spots, we're going to have to do something, and maybe that's where the $20,000 goes, to patching up that shoulder slash swale slash parking area, because we repost those April 1st, we want some of the businesses to park up there, so we can keep the downtown spots open. And that, that's about 20 spaces up that way we do have, so.
Am I correct that we have a very old water line going up there? Isn't that eventually where the project needs to go?
Sure, it's old, right, it's only, it was only constructed in 1890, so, you know, it all depends, not, it may be as old as this building, look how nice this building is, you know? Yes, that is a major waterline project, and that's when I think our next big one we'll be planning for. I think a couple of years ago, I mentioned we ought to start the planning now, because we need to do it in 10 years, well, now it has to be done in eight years. The South Main Street, Route 28, project is scheduled for 2023. That's a DOT-funded project, this is not going to get on the 10-year list, this will have to be, this will be managed, but hopefully, like we did Senate Street, we can get some funding, we can get some money, because it'll be a major sewer rehab, because the sewer's also old, and the water line has to go. The water line is still in pretty good shape, because it's a, it's a main line that's been maintained, we haven't had many breaks, so it's not at risk, but it is 130 years old, it does need to get replaced, so that is a project that we'll be having to start planning for now.
And so you think about eight years before we get to that?
That would be my goal at this point, yeah.
All right, let me answer my question, thank you.
Maybe, no, see, it's 2023, it has to be 2025, yeah, eight years. So, any other questions on that? Okay, I think I got all, so I got all my answers, and the only question is whether or not we might eliminate that. So what I'll do is I'll kind of work offline and then write a memo back to you if we decide that that's a, and I'll be talking to DOT and get some more feedback with regards to things we talked about. But at this point, we'll have to live with not paving the parking spaces. We'll be responsible striping back in our crosswalks and our parking spaces if they do get touched. And then I'll ask about going up North Main Street, because I think we're all in agreement, that would be more important to try to preserve that. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Steve.
Any old business?
Yeah, I have one piece of old business. I think Dave and I should report on our meeting with the New Durham ZBA that we went to. We got there, I would say, Dave, do you think about 100 people?
Yep.
Yeah, about 100 people there. I thought it was very interesting. They had four women, one male, and two women who were probably in their 30s or so, so I found that very interesting. The applicant had engineered through the presentation. Presentation took a hour plus. It was long, and Dave and I didn't think he dealt with many of the special exception criteria.
Done.
Yeah. They did let us speak. They let New Durham, and they had a selectman spoke, he had a few concerns. The town of Middleton was concerned about the weight of the trucks. They have a 10, an eight-ton limit and six-ton on some of the road. We went with the letter and also an addendum that Matt Sullivan had put together that clearly addressed commercial versus industrial use based on their zoning ordinance. And a commercial use is a retail in which is a business that has a direct individual consumer contact for sales or service as its principal concern. And that's how this project came in. Matt did a nice job of pointing out that it was really an industrial use, a business that processed raw materials, warehouses products, fabricates products for component parts, service industrial business or wholesale product as its principal concern. And those are definitions from the New Durham ZBA. And we pointed out that difference. The attorney for the ZBA also picked up on that, and the two other attorneys that were there representing the clients also pointed that out. And Dave, you want to go tell them what you were talking about in terms of 155?
Yeah. As you know, 155E is the state requirement for gravel pits, and they weren't meeting too many of those requirements. And plus, what was interesting too is, is, you know, being on the ZBA and stuff, there's certain requirements for variance versus special exception. As Linda mentioned, I pointed out that the applicant never even addressed one of those things, let alone all eight of them, which I thought was interesting. The other thing I thought was interesting was, nobody knew how they got to the zoning board. Was no letter of denial from anybody. So we asked, well, how did you get here? You know, who wrote the denial letter? They didn't have one. So, I don't know what's going to happen. I think that the next meeting is May 9th.
At 7:00.
Yeah, 7:00. It might not be at the school, it might have to be over at their fire station. If they have it at the fire station, they're going to have chairs outside. But it was, the attorneys for One Vesake Golf Course were there. A lot of the abutters had their own attorneys. So, yeah, it ran till 10:00 before it ended, and then they postponed it till the next meeting. So, yeah, I thought it was, was very, a lot of people spoke, a lot of them were very candid. One lady who was a direct abutter had a, she had, she had all kinds of things. She was like pinning the tail on the donkey all the way around on her different properties. It was, she did a very good job. All of them did, actually, the abutters. But I don't understand how they could, I don't understand how they got there. And the zoning, at least in my mind, is clear, as Linda mentioned, that it's an industrial project, not a commercial project, so. See what happens. I'm sure we'll hear about it, probably in the newspaper or somewhere. Yeah, so I, yeah, it was pretty interesting.
Any other old business?
I have some other.
You mean the other business?
I do have other business. The Chamber had requested that I come ask the board whether they could use one of the docks for their dock and deck event on May 6. They would like to have Good Hugh and Hawkins come in, take some boat rights over to Good Hugh and Hawkins, and they were saying any of the docks. And I was thinking, one of the docks down by Kate Park, because we know we're going to have some kind of construction going down in that area, so I was thinking one of the ones, these two down here, and so I would like to have permission from the board to tell them they can reserve a section of that dock for their event. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, I could do that.
The other thing I had, and I would like to, Peter? See, this is the Lake, oh, I think it's right there. The Wentworth Watershed Association is going to have a water summit on May 13 from 9:00 AM to 12:00. And they have some speakers from the University of New Hampshire, and they're going to talk about water conservation, water quality, and they're also going to talk about the economics of water. So that's something people may like to come and attend. And that's all I have.
Anyone else? Town manager's report?
Oh, thank you. I have a few things I'd like to report out this evening. First, Sergeant Chris Keaton has accepted the position of Chief of Police for the town of Bartlett, New Hampshire, and his last day of employment here will be April 25th. So the police department has posted the upcoming vacancy in the sergeant's position and is inviting senior patrol officers to apply for that position. The Pickering House, as you've probably noticed, has the construction fence all along it. Coniston Construction is their construction manager, as they were here for the town hall project. We issued the building permit for that project last week, and DPW and the electric department are coordinating with them relative to the water and sewer connections and the electric conduit that's going to be placed to service the, the project. So all that works going forward. I received a phone call last week from our tenants, the Wolfboro Nursery School, and they reminded me that the lease is going to be expiring in a few months, and they would like to talk about renegotiating the lease agreement. And usually, the board has designated one of your, your own to sit in on those discussions, and I wanted to see if the board wanted to do likewise this time.
Chairman, I've done it in the last couple of times, and I'm willing to say it again if nobody else would like to do it at this time.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you. I wanted to point out that there are some upcoming workshops that the New Hampshire Municipal Association is sponsoring. They're doing their annual local officials workshops. These are basically for new selectmen. We don't have any new selectmen this year, but never, never can tell if somebody wants to go and get a refresher. Also, they're having some right-to-know workshops, and we still have issues relative to right-to-know from time to time.
Do I attend that?
So there's some, well, that's your, your call, not, not mine.
Yeah.
That's a joke.
Yeah, could you have, and sign up, sign me up for June 3rd? That's a Saturday in Concord.
Are, do they have new books, or is that the same?
Oh, the right to, the Knowing the Territory, we haven't seen anything about the new books yet. Maybe they'll be handing those out at the workshops.
But they have one in Concord, June 3rd, that's a Saturday.
Okay, sign you up for that one?
Sign me up for that one.
Okay.
Would please?
Any, anybody else? Okay.
I can always not go. Get better off, huh?
There was a memo in your packet from Matt Sullivan about a concern he has about staffing weekend uses here at the Great Hall, and you can see by the calendar there that we're getting, it's becoming more, more popular, the use of the Great Hall, and we're getting into some weekends where we have two and three events scheduled in a weekend, and it's caused some concern about how are we going to cover these, these, these meetings and make sure that the building's locked up and that the, the room is set up for the next user group for the following day and such. We had a meeting amongst town staff that's involved with the building this morning, and we came up with a game plan, how we're going to cover that at least in the short term for the next few weeks. And then we'll see how that goes, and then if we need to make some modification in the way that we're scheduling our, our help to provide more coverage for the weekend events, we can, we can do that. But at this point, I didn't think we needed to make that, that change just yet. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll be interviewing the part-time candidates for the position that was created in the information technology budget, for someone to assist the town departments with information technology issues, and also to assist in managing the town website and assisting town departments to make sure that all their information is up to date on the town website. The EDC met yesterday and reorganized. The results are the same. Kathy Eaton is the chairman, and Cindy Patton was re-elected as vice chairman, so no, no change with that group. Also, the EDC and the planning board are sponsoring a lodging forum on Tuesday, next Tuesday, April 25th, here at the Great Hall, and I believe that's at 7:00. And finally, I wanted to let you know that, well, you may recall that the Heritage Commission a month or so ago had a, an event where they were promoting the barn preservation program. We have received, you have received, two applications for barn preservation easements, and we have scheduled both of those for public hearing at your next meeting on May 3rd. So you'll be hearing both of the applications at that time. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Committee reports. Brad?
I've had a fairly light week, the last couple of weeks, as far as town stuff goes, because I had so many other commitments, so I haven't had any meetings that I had to attend.
Didn't you attend the scenic roads at the end?
I did roll into that at the end of that one, yes.
Dave?
As Linda mentioned, we were in New Durham one evening. We've had a ZBA meeting. We also had a ZBA meeting with Laura Spector, the attorney, who talked to us about different things that we should be well aware of, which some people weren't. I had an MRC meeting, which is a county resource committee for emergencies, and that's all I had, other than doing some work for the town.
I attended the scenic road workshop.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that.
Yeah, Dave was there also.
I was there.
Yeah. It was well-attended. People talked about their concerns about trees being damaged, some of their property, when the plows come through, have gotten nicked. But there seemed to be a general consensus that maybe some of these scenic and dirt roads were getting too wide. I thought it was well-attended, and I was glad I went. I had, was at the Chamber Executive Board meeting. I went to the annual member mingle, and at that member mingle, Kathy Eaton was given the General Wolf Award this year, well-deserved. I attended the EDC meeting, and Dave has given most of that information. The only other thing I would like to point out, that the committee is going to put into Yankee Magazine, that is an ad, and that ad has been producing a fair amount of calls to the Chamber, and so they're going to put it in six editions, six edition over this next, next year, in the hopes that we will start promoting it now in there in the winter. It was really a summer promotion last time. And the different committees from the Business Retention and Expansion Program gave some reports.
Thank you. Mr. Bowers and I attended the, and Mr. Owen attended the preview at the, for the Our Town Wolfboro presentation last week, which was very well-attended. I also went to the member mingle last week at Garwoods with Linda. And tomorrow night, I'll be going, and being the captain, I'll be having the police commission meeting at the library, so, canceled. Dave?
I went to a library meeting. Everything's fine, they're working on raising money. They haven't had a heck of a lot of success with donations. They have to raise into seven figures, so they're working on a campaign to try to attract some major donors. Then I've been starting, because there are leaves on the trees, and documenting some of the town public spaces, marshes and parks, photographically, so that I understand them better, know where some of the roads are, and this will be available to anybody who wants it.
Thanks, Dave. Questions from the press? I'll look input. Limited to three minutes, 15 minutes total.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Sims, Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum. Want to let you know that we're applying for two grants. One of them is Northern Borders Regional Commission grant. They gave $100,000 to a ski museum in North Conway last year, so we're optimistic, but the regional commissions are also under some threat of not being funded this year. So we will see what happens. Everyone is proceeding as if things are normal, and we're applying for that. The, we went to the introductory meeting here in this room on the 7th of April. The letter of intent goes out at the end of April, and the grant application needs to be in on June 2nd, and the decision will come down in October, November timeframe. We're also applying for an LCHIP grant, which is land community, I think it's Land Community Heritage Investment? Investment program. Yeah, Land Community Heritage Investment Program that's administered out of the state, it's a state program. But to apply for that, the property has to be declared eligible for the state register. It doesn't have to be listed on the State Register of Historic Places, but it has to be a determination of eligibility that is done by the Department of Historic Resources. And so that package went in today for this declaration of, or determination of eligibility. The meeting to decide that will be next week, and I'll be going to that in Concord. With that in hand, then we can apply for the LCHIP grant. Without it, we cannot, it's a prerequisite. But, so those are the two things that are happening. So your freight house may be eligible for listing, but it will not be listed.
Yes, can I ask a question? Who, who would the applicant be? Is it the town?
The applicant is, is the Model Railroad Museum.
For both grants?
For both grants.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So I entertain a motion to go into non-public?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
You start finding your life away if you wish.
You start throwing your life away if you wish.
Linda, do you want to start reading this? Chris hasn't signed it.
Let me know.
Yeah.
Okay.